Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting for January 21st, 2025 and call it to order. If you would, please, at this time, please rise as you're able for a moment of silence and a pledge to the flag. Thank you. Please turn toward towards the flag and say, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Please take a seat. If you would, please, call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Moyer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. La Rochelle.
Dr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Here.
Reverend Hathaway.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we'll start off with our annual elections and reorganization. If you would, please, here, turn your attention to Mr. Silva, and he'll conduct the election of officers, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bennett, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Patrick Silva, Principal Planner with New Kent County's Planning Division, and at tonight's meeting, we will be conducting the Planning Commission's Officer Elections for 2025. So, to provide a brief overview, the way this process will work is we'll first open the floor for nominations for the role of Chair, during which time, any Planning Commission member may nominate another for the role of Planning Commission Chair, and once all nominations for Chair have been made, we will then close the floor for nominations. At that point, we will then undertake a roll call vote, and the first nominee who receives a majority vote of the members of the Commission will then be elected Chair, at which point, we will then close the Chair election portion of this evening's Planning Commission Officer Elections, and I will then turn the floor over to the newly-elected Chairperson to run the remainder of the Officer Elections in the same approach that was just described. So, with that being said, I formally ask the members of the New Kent County Planning Commission if there are any nominations for the role of Planning Commission Chair for 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to get his brother's side with regularity. She doesn't work, so she gets a little bit of a...
I'm not going to be landlocked.
Elbow through the wall.
We first got him, like, more slowly.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting for January 21st, 2025, and call it to order. If you would, please, at this time, please rise as you're able for a moment of silence and a pledge to the flag. Thank you. Please turn toward towards the flag and say, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Please take a seat. If you would, please, call the roll.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Moyer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. La Rochelle. Dr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Here.
Reverend Hathaway.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we'll start off with our annual elections and reorganization. If you would, please, here, turn your attention to Mr. Silva, and he'll conduct the election of officers, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bennett, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Patrick Silva, Principal Planner with New Kent County's Planning Division, and at tonight's meeting, we will be conducting the Planning Commission's Officer Elections for 2025. So, to provide a brief overview, the way this process will work is we'll first open the floor for nominations for the role of Chair, during which time, any Planning Commission member may nominate another for the role of Planning Commission Chair, and once all nominations for Chair have been made, we will then close the floor for nominations. At that point, we will then undertake a roll call vote, and the first nominee who receives a majority vote of the members of the Commission will then be elected Chair, at which point, we will then close the Chair election portion of this evening's Planning Commission Officer Elections, and I will then turn the floor over to the newly-elected Chairperson to run the remainder of the Officer Elections in the same approach that was just described. So, with that being said, I formally ask the members of the New Kent County Planning Commission if there are any nominations for the role of Planning Commission Chair for 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I move to nominate Mr. Davis as the 2025 Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
So, we have a nomination for Mr. Davis for the role of Chair. Do we have any other nominations this evening? Hearing none, I would welcome any of those that are in favor of closing the floor to further nominations for the role of Planning Commission Chair. Understood. All right. Mr. Ryder, could we have a roll call vote to close the floor to further nominations for the role of Chair?
Mr. La Rochelle? Oops, sorry. Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
And, Mr. Davis?
This is to close, right? Aye.
All right, so we have now closed the floor to further nominations, so on to the election portion of this evening for the role of Chair for 2025. We have a nomination for Mr. Joseph Davis in the role of Chair. Mr. Ryder, can you please take a roll call vote relating to this election of Mr. Davis in the role of Chair?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway? Aye. Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Abstain.
The ayes have it, and congratulations, Chair Davis. I now turn the floor over to you to conduct the remainder of the Planning Commission Officer Elections.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Silva, and thank you to all for those votes. Looking forward to the opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Bennett, for your service, and all the other officers from the year 2024. Moving forward, do we have any nominations for the position of Vice Chair of the Planning Commission?
I nominate Mr. Bennett as for the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Okay. Any other nominations for Vice Chair?
I move to close nominations.
Mr. Ryder, will you poll the Commissioners?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Abstain.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Now, we entertain a motion to move to elect...
Mr. Davis, I move to elect Mark Bennett as the 2025 Vice Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Mr. Ryder?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Abstain.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Welcome back, Mr. Bennett. Now, for election of Public Hearing Chair, any nominations for the 2025 Public Hearing Chair? There are none, I'd like to nominate Ms. Rose for the position of Public Hearing Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to close the nominations for, I mean, excuse me, for Public Hearing Chair for 2025.
Mr. Ryder?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. All right, we now entertain a motion to elect Ms. Rose.
Mr. Davis, or Chairman Davis, I move to elect Laura Rose as the 2025 Public Hearing Chair for the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Mr. Ryder?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Abstain.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Rose. And now, for Public Hearing Vice Chair, any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to nominate Dr. Schmidt as the 2025 Public Hearing Vice Chair for New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any other nominations?
Make a motion to close the nominations.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Mr. Ryder?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. And with that, we have a motion to close nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I move to elect...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, my first day.
I move to elect Joanne Smith. Dr. Joanne, okay, I'm saying the name wrong, as the 2025 Public Hearing Vice Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Mr. Ryder, please poll the Members.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Abstain.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. And now, moving to Plan RVA Representative, any nominations?
I move to nominate Reverend Dr. Milton Hathaway for the Representative of New Kent County Planning Commission for 2025 Plan RVA.
Thank you, Mr. Dombrowski. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to close nominations for the 2025 Plan RVA Representation for New Kent County.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Ryder, please poll the Commissioners, please.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. And entertaining a motion to elect Mr. Hathaway.
I make the motion to, I move to elect Dr., oh my gosh, I mess this up every time, Reverend Dr. Milton Hathaway for the 2025 Plan RVA Representative for New Kent County Planning Commission.
Mr. Ryder, please poll the Commissioners?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Abstain.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Hathaway. Thanks to all who've accepted positions on the Planning Commission.
Mr. Commissioner? I would like to move to say I need to resign from the current economic, excuse me, from the current Board for, now, my mind is slipping me, I've been all over the place today, for affordable housing in New Kent. I need to remove myself from that committee at this time.
All right. Thank you, sir. It's a, Mr. Everard, I guess, the formality of it, we can nominate a replacement from the Planning Commission to fill in...
Yes, Mr. Chair, so if we could just get something in writing for you, if the Planning Commission would like to recommend another member from this body to serve on the Housing Advisory Committee, then we can take that to the Board of Supervisors, who will then appoint that person at their next meeting.
Can we do that with a voice vote or a roll call vote for, it was similar to this process, or can I appoint?
You can do it with a voice vote, but if somebody objects, then we will do a roll call vote, if somebody wants to hear the numbers.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, in light of that, there's a bunch of conversations that's going on within Plan RVA that I think would be very beneficial for that person who attends Plan RVA, also attend the Housing Summit Committee, and I would nominate Reverend Milton Hathaway for that position, if he's not opposed.
Reverend Hathaway? All right. All in favor of Reverend Hathaway, serving on the Housing Advisory Committee, we'll have a voice vote, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries, so, and this, for the formality of it, the Board of Supervisors has to technically appoint Reverend Hathaway, but he has our recommendation to that Board. Thank you, Reverend. Next, we have the adoption of bylaws. I hope all the members have looked over, with exception, I believe, to the change we made last year to, I think, the definition or of a group, I believe. Anybody have any comments or discussion on the bylaws?
Mr. Chairman, if there is no discussion on these bylaws, I make a motion that we accept them as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. With that, so the question is to approve the, adopt the bylaws as written. Mr. Ryder, can you poll the Commissioners, please?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. So, bylaws are adopted for 2025. Next on the agenda is the adoption of our 2025 meeting schedule, which was in your information packet. So, similarly, as in previous years, looks like it's going to be the third Monday of the month, with exceptions to this month and next month, February will be Tuesday meetings due to state holidays or county holidays. Anyone have any issues or concerns with the schedule? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adopting the meeting schedule.
Mr. Davis, Chairman Davis, I make a motion that we accept the meeting schedule for 2025.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Mr. Ryder, please poll the Commissioners?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. So, we have adopted the 2025 meeting schedule, and next on the agenda is the approval of the December 16th, 2024 regular meeting. Does anyone have any comments or corrections for those minutes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Hearing no comments, I move to adopt the December 16th minutes as presented.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rose. So, the question is, adopting the December 16th, 2024 regular meeting minutes, no corrections. Mr. Ryder, can you poll the Commissioners, please?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. So, minutes are approved. Next up is the citizen comment period. Comments are limited to those on planning-related issues that are not scheduled for a public hearing later on the agenda. There's a sign-up sheet in the lobby prior to the start of the meeting, and we're checking to see if we had anybody sign up. And there's, no one signed up for citizen comment. We'll close the citizen comment period, and, Mr. Regan, do we have any presentations? And next on the agenda is unfinished business. To the chair, former chair?
Negative.
No unfinished business. Next, we have our public hearings. We have two public hearings scheduled for tonight, first being the Capital Improvement Plan, and I'm going to turn it over to the Public Hearing Chair, Ms. Rose.
All right. Sorry. Just want to make sure we had the timing right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will now open the public hearing portion of the evening. I'll say first, we have two public hearings for consideration this evening. Both of them have been duly advertised. A few of the ground rules for presenting comments. We will hear from, we will hear about the, about the hearing, the hearing agenda, and then we will hear from any, any other respondents, and then we will move on to the public portion of the comment period. Each person that is signed up to speak will have three minutes to speak. If it's, if there's an individual that is representing a group of three or more individuals, they will have seven minutes to speak. We, when you come up to the podium, you will have, you will state your name and address for the record, and then present your comments to the Commission. You will address the Commission only and not address the applicant. I'll now open the first public hearing for the Capital Improvement Plan for the 2026 through 2030 timeframe. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you. This evening, you have before you for public hearing, the FY 2026, 2030 Capital Improvement This evening, you have before you for public hearing the FY 2026-2030 Capital Improvement Plan, proposed capital improvement plan totaling $182,959,834. That total is for the entire five-year plan, which consists of projects for the next fiscal year, which is 2026, totaling $23,743,383 of county-funded projects and public utility projects totaling $17,368,600. Just like to note, out of the county-funded projects, the $23,743,383, about a little over $10 million is funded by grants and Central Virginia Transportation Authority funding. Therefore, the impact to our capital fund balance would be $12,903,656. Also like to note, at our last meeting in December, I proposed several fee changes dealing with animal control, emergency services, and public utilities. Those fees have also been advertised for public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Reverend Hathaway, I mean... Switched positions. Yeah, he did. I just need clarification on the application here. It says FY '25, that's the adopted budget in the first column, right? And then the second column is what we're asking for for the '25-'26 year, right?
That is correct. FY '25, we just wanted to give you a reference of what's currently funded for each project. The next column, which states FY '25-'26, that is what the departments requested. What I'm recommending for funding is all the way at the end, on the right-hand side, highlighted in yellow.
Okay. And then that also is one that is funded by other areas, too, right?
Some of these projects are not solely funded by county funds. Some of the projects are funded by state grants and Central Virginia Transportation funding. And the way that you can tell, the second-to-last column at the end is the total project cost, and then the very last column is the total impact capital fund balance. So, the difference...
To us.
Right. That's what the county is paying for. So, the difference is what makes up the grants and...
That's a big difference, right? Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to make sure of a clarification.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Hathaway. Mr. Hathaway, just kind of enlighten me a little bit. It seems to be that Pinefort Park is a reoccurring item in the budget, okay? And I'm just wondering, is it because it's greater than anticipated use, or was the planning prior to its construction underanticipated? Or was it a necessary extension of funding throughout several years to pay for the improvements? I'm just wondering if we missed the mark.
No. The original plan for Pinefort Park was sort of, well, it wasn't sort of, it was pay-as-you-go. So, it began as a phase project, which last year we included lights. That was part of the original plan. In the first phase, we ran the conduit for the lights, but knowing that we didn't have the cash on hand to pay for it, we just ran the conduit. We came back last year and installed the lights. This year, we're looking at adding additional facilities, which was in the original master plan for the facility. So, we didn't have to borrow money for this project. We phased it.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Ms. Hathaway, under the Parks and Recreation budget lines, there's no planned improvements budgeted for the former McKemme Woods in Barrensville. A Parks and Recreation Master Plan is shown in year four. Should we move up the master plan so park development can be considered or evaluated? Or is there a separate feasibility study for the property that needs to occur?
The board has recently directed me to reach out to Plan RVA, which I met with Plan RVA last week. We're going to be working with them in this fiscal year to develop the master plan. So, yes, we could definitely move that up, because that work will happen this fiscal year.
Okay. All right.
Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Hearing none, we'll move on to the citizens' comment portion. Let the record note that there were no citizens signed up to comment. Any further discussion before I close this hearing? Close the hearing and turn it back over to Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. So now, I guess we'll entertain a vote to, or a motion? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion in order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county. I move to adopt Resolution PC 10125 to forward the capital improvement program FY 2026 through FY 2030 to New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, for the motion. Mr. Rider, could you please poll the commissioners?
Mr. Moore?
Upstaying.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dobrosky?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. All right. So, that carries. Ms. Rose, I'm going to turn it back over to you to open up the next public hearing.
Yes, sir. I'll now open the public hearing for CUP-04-24, Camco Properties LLC.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rose, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Again, my name is Patrick Silva, Principal Planner with the Department of Community Development's Planning Division, here this evening to provide an overview of a conditional use permit request submitted by Cortezia Thomas on that Camco Properties LLC, requesting approval of an assembly hall event venue use located at 16305 New Kent Highway, Zoned A1 Agricultural. The site contains a total of approximately 15.7 acres, with five acres on the western portion of the site planned to be used in relation to the proposed assembly hall use. The applicant has stated in a narrative statement they provided with their application that they wish to utilize the site to host intimate gatherings, including weddings, birthday parties, garden parties, and religious retreats, with a maximum of 125 guests anticipated for any given event. The New Kent County zoning ordinance does require conditional use permit approval for an assembly hall event venue located in the A1 zone. And I would like to note that consideration of this request was duly advertised via newspaper legal ad, as well as letters sent to adjacent property owners in relation to the subject set at the center of the CUP request. The standards for review of conditional use permits are set forth in Section 98-744 of the New Kent County Code, which staff has evaluated the CUP request in relation to. And in addition, the CUP request before you this evening was reviewed by all pertinent county agencies, as well as the Virginia Department of Transportation. And included in your meeting packet within the staff report for this item are the comments that staff received from the aforementioned reviewing agencies in relation to the CUP request. To speak a little bit about staff's evaluation of the request that is before you this evening, it was confirmed that the proposed use does comply with the land uses envisioned for this location by the county's comprehensive plan, which designates this section of New Kent Highway as A1, and furthermore, finds that the operation of this use would not promote undue negative effects on the health and safety and general welfare of New Kent County residents. However, in order to mitigate any potential impacts stemming from the use's operations, including things like noise, traffic, and parking and general event operations, staff has recommended a number of conditions of approval related to the quest, that are, the request, rather, that are detailed in the staff report and resolution for this item that are in your meeting packet for this evening. In conclusion, subject to the conditions of approval that are detailed in the staff report that I just mentioned, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit requests and are available for any questions you might have. I also did want to take a moment to give the applicant, Cortezia Thomas, a moment to speak, if she would want to at all. Okay.
Excuse me. Madam Chair, I just want to make a point of order. So, obviously, Ms. Thomas is an applicant, so I guess the record has to reflect her note that she's recusing herself from commenting as a commissioner and will not vote on this. So, thank you.
Good evening. I am the owner of Camco's property, myself, along with my husband that's back there, and my wonderful, lovely daughter that's here tonight. What we are proposing is just to use the property. You actually have a packet in front of you with the presentation that shows the plot of, the piece of property that we will be using, which really is the back area of the property. Nothing more. The farmland will stay the way that it is now. I am so sorry. Let's see. I think I'm, who's moving?
You're moving.
Okay. The back area of the property, which has the garden area, which is important to me, that no, the rest of the property will not be used, because we will continue with the cows and the horses that was there before we actually purchased the property. So, the farmland will remain the same, and the back portion of the yard area will be used for what I have submitted the application for. Other than that, nothing will be disturbed. Because this is our second home, we will continue to have the front of the property the way that it is. We don't want it to look like a full-scale business. We want it to remain as part of the neighborhood and keep the same character that it has now, besides more flowers. That's me. Do you have any other questions for me?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Ms. Thomas, so based on what we're seeing, is the, and I'm assuming, of course, the house will continue, that is, the residence that's shown on the picture, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, the front, or is there going to be any type of separation between the venue aspect of it and the residence itself? Or will anybody who's at the venue go anywhere inside the house? Or how is it going to be set up?
No. We normally just have two places that people can venture into the house, which is, in case it rains, the sunroom area. And we will have a back bedroom area for a bride if she wants to get dressed there. Other than that, the prettiest part of the property is outside.
Right.
And so, that's really what we're trying to use it for.
And I guess, too, and this is the code person that I am, so has any contact with the building official, anything regarding a change of use on the property for the building itself? Any consideration for that? If the occupants, if it's not used as residence all the time, just used as a venue part of the time, it's an assembly use? So, have you had any discussions with the building official on any changes you may have to do or not do?
Well, I could answer that. I have talked to pretty much everyone, unless you want to get up and say something. I've pretty much talked to everyone. We will continue to use this property, and that is why I'm not going to pretty much open it up for the public, because we're there. We spent Christmas there. We're there every day, really. So, the building use will remain the same, which is really a second home for me, because we are really trying to farm. But as far as using it for the public and really getting down into just opening the building up, which is the home, the answer is no. This is why I said we would, ultimately, if you want to do something on the property, you would have to have a privy on the property, because I don't want back-and-forth traffic to my backyard.
Right. So, the limits would be the outer portions of the building itself. It's not, people won't be really going into the building as a normal course of the event, correct?
That is correct. Unless it's family, friends. I will allow some people to go in, but I really have to know you. So, again...
And I guess another aspect of it, you're not advertising it to be a venue inside the space in the building itself to...
That is correct. I will have, again, I will have the sunroom area open for use, but as far as upstairs, living room, kitchen, all of those things that you would normally do on a home, I do it there. So, I'm not opening up the home.
I imagine you'd have some type of soft barricades to keep people from venturing in through your home.
Oh, for the sun, if I heard you properly, the sunroom itself has doors on it.
Okay.
I can close it, and I can lock it.
I have one question, if I could ask. So, this is the house that has like the curved driveway in the front? Is it like a circle driveway?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, I see you have 125 that can actually be on the property. So, I guess we're looking at probably 50 to maybe 60 vehicles if you were full capacity. How would you be handling the traffic, and where would they be parking?
Well, I think on the packet, they had it for the amount of people that I said I would have on the property is 32, 32 cars. For that, I, my response to that is 10 cars in the front, and I would allow 30 cars in the back of the property.
The back of the property, between the yellow line and the stables?
No. The back, beside the horse barn, there.
There, okay.
Yeah.
Can we go back to the more aerial view? Identify where that area is, please. Ms. Thomas, where's that area that you have identified as parking on that view there?
The front of the house with the circle. There's no, I don't have a picture of that, but there's just a circle driveway that you drive up. The back of the house.
I understand, but that, the secondary view that we just saw, that came up, just that view there?
Yes.
Where is this area as it relates to the planned area of the previous slide?
Uh...
Can we go back to the previous slide?
To...
That's all. Where is that there?
Okay. So, if you see the building in the back there?
On the right?
That's the horse barn.
Yes.
Now, go back to the other slide, please. Okay, that's the horse barn. You're just seeing the other view of it.
On the back side.
So, the house is to the left?
The house is to the left, up the hill. You're looking at the parking there in front of the horse barn. Correct? Not within the riding paddock, but outside, in that gravel area.
Okay. Going back to the previous view again, tell me where that is on that diagram. I mean, justify where it is on that diagram.
Can I walk to the...
Sure. Sure, thank you. I appreciate that.
Bottom right here.
So, when you go back, you drive down the driveway, and right beside here...
Yes.
The picture is cut off.
Okay.
That's where the car is.
Okay. Okay.
So, the paddock is right behind us, and the car is...
All right.
Ms. Thomas, I just have one question in terms of the occupancy. We're at 125, obviously, your sunroom.
We're at 125, obviously, your sunroom is not going to hold 125 people. Are you, have intentions of using temporary structures on the property?
Safety, a little loud.
The, obviously, the home is only, only a few rooms that you'll be utilizing for the 125 attendees or guests, whatever you might call that. Do you, in, do you plan to use temporary structures like tents or things like that within the property for these events?
If someone wants to rent a tent, yes, they would have to get a permit for it.
Right.
And I would specify where the tent, it should go.
Okay. And it'll be within the confines of the yellow grounds, or, I mean, I'm assuming that's probably the most level location of the property?
Yes.
So, okay, thank you.
Ms. Thomas, you, you mentioned that, that anybody that would be renting the venue would have to provide a privia of sorts, so port-a-pot, you'd have to specify the use of port-a-potties?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There's no, there's no other, there's only this, the septic, the current septic for, for the house, which it would be very limited use, right?
Could you speak up a little louder?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I think I was, the only, the only septic, and the only permanent wa- waste disposal is the, is the septic system, which is for a, a single, single-family home, correct?
That's correct. The, the house itself is 5,000 square feet. It has...
Oh, wow, okay.
Yes, it has a little over 5,000. It has a number of bathrooms and bedrooms, but the septic system itself, I know it's a number of years old, but if you know me, then you know me. Even now, when I have things personally at my, my main home, even with family, I will get a privy and put it outside. So, this, it's, I'm going to request that for my, I would say, OCD.
Well, yeah, I was just trying to get a sense of the scale, the scale of the events, and then what, 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 what they think we're going to control through, whether it's port-a-potties.
Yeah, and another thing is, whenever there's someone there, such as having an event there, I will be there, or my husband would be there. When it comes to weddings, anyway, I, I am an officiant, so most of the time, I will be there. If I'm not there, my husband will be there. Yeah.
Madam Chair, just, so to clarify with the sanitation, that it's not your intent to have portable restrooms there year-round? It's just, it's when they, they have an event, when someone contracts with you at an event, it's going to be their responsibility to contract for that, or will you provide that service to them?
It will be a joint effort. It will be a joint effort, because I'm there, I would need to make sure that it goes where I want it to go.
And it's per event, it's not a continuous, there'll be no portable restrooms there year-round, for example?
No.
Okay.
No.
Madam Chair, couple more questions for Ms. Thomas. Ms. Thomas, have you, when do you anticipate, if everything, all the stones align, and all the stars align, when do you anticipate that this site would be under operation as a leasable venue?
March.
March, okay. And this will be in, this is continuous use, but you anticipate this to go for years, 10 years, 20 years, whatever? As far as being leased out, leased as a venue? Do you plan the operation for 10 years, whatever?
Yes, myself, and my daughter.
Oh, sure, sir, sure, absolutely. Have you re- reviewed all the draft conditions that the staff has, has generated?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions regarding those?
Do I have any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
No.
Okay. And it seemed like, Mr. Silva, you had a few more items that you wanted to address. Is that correct?
Sure. I was getting ready to. I know Mr. Davis had asked a question about whether or not the building official of the county had had any eyes on this request. I did want to detail that we had run the proposed use in the application by our building official. It's one of those things where unfortunately, the, the code can be less than clear sometimes as it relates to change in use where there's no new construction proposed. So, as you'll see in the recommended conditions, staff is, is asking for a concept plan that outlines in a little bit more detail the proposed use of the property, including, in specific, what sort of indoor spaces might be used in relation to the property. And a large reason for that is so the building official can get a little bit of a better sense of what sort of use change requirements might be, need to be considered or improved upon from a code perspective. So, the building official has seen this, but at this time doesn't have any immediate recommendations with, as it relates to improvements relating to the change in use.
Thank you.
Mr. Silva, before you sit down, if you don't mind, one of the draft conditions, number six, the applicant should provide 32 off-site parking spaces based upon the requirement of one space per four seats. And since the applicant hasn't really identified seats, nor has the use identified any number of seats, should we change that maybe to one parking spaces for every four attendees? Possibly, that way, the numbers equate?
And you really hit the nail on the head with, with respect to how staff was interpreting the parking requirements. The assembly hall use and its parking requirements that are outlined in the code don't necessarily take into account every version of how an assembly hall or a venue might operate. So, that is how staff interpreted that parking requirement provision, as opposed to seats, as you mentioned, every four attendees at one space would be required. And that's how we came up with that required parking value.
And the second question is, this commission in the past has, sometimes, and I think more of late than, in, in the previous years, have identified either a sunset or a, a, for instance, if things don't begin to take place, then this conditional use permit expires. If the, if the site becomes dormant on this activity, the conditional use permit expires. Was there any discussion on a non-performance event sunset date and a performance sunset date?
There was some evaluation of that internally with respect to whether or not staff felt that would be something that we really wanted to push as a condition of approval. Of course, the planning commission has the latitude to add, add that as an additional condition, but at the time of the drafting of the report, based on the intensity of the use that the applicant was proposing, staff didn't feel necessary to include that as, as a condition of approval. But of course, the planning commission could elect to do so.
Okay. And one final question for Ms. Thomas. Ms. Thomas, I really wish you success at this, and I really want you to see success at this, but having done engineering for sites like this before in my prior life, I'm just wondering if you have allocated enough space to do the things you envision. Parking takes up demand, other activities associated with what you envision happening to the property takes up space demands, and I know there's some character that there is present in the front of the dwelling that really sets this site apart from the rest and still maintains the character of the community. So, do you, do you think you can accommodate all those necessary items that you envisioned for your use, the assembly use and the wedding venue, and all those things that are necessary to happen within that five acres that this permit has...
Yes, I do.
Because otherwise, you'll have to come back to amend it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yes, I do. As a matter of fact, when I first put in the application, it was for one acre, because it's, I just have a vision of hosting small events. And as, as a matter of fact, I actually had my own personal birthday party there. So, I know how many spaces, how many people came, how many, all of that accommodation. We actually tested out for my own birthday, so I, I pretty much know how it's going to go. But the more we thought about it, and the more that I began to conversate with Mr. Silva here, I increased it to five acres.
And you're pretty sure, almost confident, that you can accommodate that, those needs that you envision?
Yes.
And growth you envision in those five acres?
Yes, because that my number one priority is gardening and farming. That's my number one priority. Number two is, I want people to come and enjoy and see what I see. My main reason for doing this is because, really, and most of you guys know, five years ago, when I lost my son, I was sitting here as a planning commissioner on the board, and I had this great idea, because I really wanted to open it up for myself, for parents who have lost children, for us to kind of conversate and talk, because most people don't want to talk about it. They kind of skim over it. But I find that when I find another person that has experienced a loss such as mine, they're willing to talk to me. They want to talk about it. They want to talk about their child that's no longer here. So, that's why I decided to do this, and my husband went along for the ride, and everyone...
He's smiling right now.
Everyone else can see more than what I can see. I see that one acre and me planting a whole bunch of flowers and making a garden area, but during my birthday party, I can tell you, people saw much more than I did. I saw grief in mothers and fathers. That's what I saw when I originally put this application in, and family, and coming together and having small weddings. But, yeah, that's why I increased the size to five acres, to be sure. If I wanted to do something more, I would have the ability in the approval to do it.
Okay. Thank you. Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we've, we've gone through this discussion before on previous, at the expiration date, but again, I will kind of voice my concerns on all of the CUPs that have come in. I do believe that they should have some kind of stopping point, because on our books, we do have several conditional use permits that have not come to, to play. And we need to clean house. If they're not going to, to do what needs to be done at some period of time, that information needs to be removed, and they need to reapply for the application.
Can I make a comment on that? One of the things we'd be doing, once, if we approve it here and as the board supervises, we are, I believe, increasing the value of the property, because that conditional use permit then will go with the property. And if it's approved as a, quote, "assembly hall/wedding venue," that what I would think would increase its value. So, that's why I think it's important that if we agree for a conditional use permit, there'd be a timeline on it, that it needs to begin to be something, and I don't think it's going to be a problem, but if we were doing this for anybody, it should be beginning to be a assembly hall slash wedding venue in, in a year or two. The back end, that, that, we shouldn't do anything about that. That, that's, that's not what we do, meaning that it would expire sometime. It's the use of it as a conditional use is what we should worry about.
Yeah, but if she continued to own the property, but then the property didn't ever come to play, it would still be sitting on the books.
No, no. If, if it wouldn't, if it wouldn't, if it wouldn't never become what, what her desire is, okay, then I think there should have some time of limit on that, a year, two years, three years. But the back end of that, if she's, she does it as soon as she can and continue to doing it, and if that expires, that's, that's her choice.
Mr. Moore, to continue the discussion, I agree with Ms. Townsend, I would agree with you. If you remember, there was a discussion we had regarding the pilot, that so long it was in the continuous use under same owner, the conditional use permit continued with the property. But once it changed owner, the consideration that, that conditional use permit would expire.
No, actually, the pilot is, is the reason why I'm bringing this up, because the pilot was, it did expire, and it did have to renew after 10 years.
Yes.
Even though it was the, the same owner. And so, I would, I would not want us to go, to put up tenure and then, then have, come back on that.
But I believe we've changed that language so that now, unless something happens now, there, so long they're the same users, doing the same use continuously, that conditional use will not expire until they either sell the property or the property becomes in disuse in a year.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah. So, I think, I think with that kind of closure sunset, that's acceptable as well, and as well, have a sunset for action to get to that point, is necessary. Again, just to open and close the books so that we don't have things writing on our books for a long time. I went over with staff about a month ago, there was a couple of things that we had, conditional uses, they have changed, they have changed owner, and those things won't come to fruition. And one of them, I think, is still kind of stand, stand out there, but I think the discussion staff had with the applicant, that's going to fade away too, but the conditional use will still be there. Yeah, so, it's Mr. Ironman.
Just a point of clarification, it's more tied to the use of the property, not necessarily the owner. With the pilot, we conditioned that if the use ever ceased for a period of, I believe, one year, then we would require a new CUP to be applied for, approved, prior to reinstating that use.
And if I'm not mistaken, it was also, if there was a change in ownership for the pilot, was that not correct?
I think that was the original proposal. I think we ended up pulling that out, because the, the CUP is more tied to the use of the property, not necessarily to the owner. So, again, like Mr. Silva said, the commissioners have the latitude to, you know, request that condition be added, but I would say that, you know, we can use that similar language. You know, if the use ceased for a period of a year, two years, however long it may be, then, you know, we could come back for a CUP. But until then, it would run in perpetuity with the land.
Mr. Chairman, of course. So, what would constitute use? I mean, is there a number of times that you have to do it? Because it seems to me, once we approve it, we shouldn't have to go back and deal with that.
Yeah, it would be more difficult with this CUP and event venue, especially on a, you know, primarily residential or secondary residence, than it would be pilot. Obviously, pilot's very out there in the open and along the main road, so we would notice that that was not happening. Part of that, I think, would rely on a relationship between the applicant and staff to notify us if they sold the property, they were ceasing the use. We do have the option to organize inspections under the CUP, that's one of the conditions that's in there. But it would definitely be more difficult, but we can add that language if the commissioner...
It seems that would be very difficult on staff, just to manage that. And if we're comfortable at this stage of the process, then unless something comes to your attention, then I think it should just continue.
And we're open to that. Again, we didn't draft that in the packet that you have in front of you. That is an option that the commission has, if they wish to add that condition.
Mr. Chairman, my point was viewed, and I don't want to use the pilot as a thing. Now, if she were to go into business and she has an event, she could have one event a year, that, you know, that doesn't matter, as long as there's an event. But we have some CUPs right now that have not done anything. So, if there is no action within, I would say, like a five-year period, if there is nothing done at that point in time, I think that CUP needs to be looked at.
Agreed.
Again, I mean, it's the pleasure of the commission on whether or not they want to add that language. Again, it would be tough to, I think, track that when there's no proposed changes or requirements right now.
Yeah.
So, it is, it is a little different.
But tax receipts, tax receipts of, I mean, she's leasing the, you're leasing the property, I'm sure there'd be taxes, over and above normal real estate taxes that would be collected for renting the venue.
Yeah, there would be a business license tied to the property.
Yeah, so, those are ways that, that can be managed, through business, business applications or tax receipt from the business license, things of that nature. And I know it's another step, but just as much as there's a step in doing that, there's a step in understanding that these are still open venues that have a CUP riding with it. If the applicant...
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
If the applicant had a birthday party, and that was the only thing that happened over the course of a year, would the applicant have met the requirements?
I would say yes.
So, it's not based on...
So it's not based on any funding or business in terms of financial transactions, just the use. It's whatever the applicant determines to be the use should meet the requirement.
Could we, could I ask a quick question? Could we potentially tie the establishment of the use to this, the idea that the applicant has to submit a concept plan?
Yes, the planning commission could recommend that. I just want to sort of try to clean things up. It sounds like there's three different conditions that have been discussed. One regarding the initiation of the use as an assembly hall. One regarding if ever during the existence of the CUP, which could be forever and ever, there's ever a cessation in use of the assembly hall. And then the other, which is like the pilot, which is after a term of years that the CUP would end. And then just from my perspective, it seems that all of the things that are necessary to get the use started are there, except for the concept plan. With regards to there ever being a cessation of use because of the nature of the property, that would be kind of a difficult thing for staff to enforce. And I think staff on the third one, where the duration was discussed, is moving away from those. Because then we come back, and we come back, and we come back. And once a use has been started, the planning commission and the board historically has not wanted to stop that use once it's been granted. So it just seems like an unnecessary burden to come back in 10 years and do it again. And for us to keep a spreadsheet of all these timelines and things and could potentially have a lapse. And it could be on staff and not even on the applicant. So I think from the staff's perspective, we don't really see the need to have any of those three options. But obviously, the planning commission can recommend whichever conditions it wills.
Mr. Chairman, I think in the interest of time for the public hearing portion, unless there's any other pertinent discussion, I'd like to go to the public, public comment portion if there, if there, if anybody signed up. Okay. Note that no one has signed up. I'm going to close the public hearing and turn over any, any further discussion and motion to the chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. With that being said, any further discussion on the CUP? And if there is no further discussion, we entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Yes, sir.
In order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution number PC 02 dash 25 to forward application CUP 04 2024 to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation. I further move that the planning commission finds this project to be in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Reverend Hathaway. So we have a motion to move forward with a favorable recommendation to the board supervisors. Mr. Rutter, can you poll commissioners?
Mr. Moyer?
I abstain.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Thomas, and welcome back. Next on the agenda, new business. We have two items. First one is an exception request, PC 03 dash 25. Mr. Silva?
Thank you very much, Chair Davis, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Again, my name is Patrick Silver, Principal Planner with the Department of Community Development's Planning Division here this evening to provide an overview of an exception request submitted by the New Kent County Department of Public Utilities pursuant to Section 98 dash 1071 of the county code to waive provisions which prohibit the use of chain link fencing in portions of properties located within the county's Commerce Corridor Overlay District. So the exception request before you this evening relates to the proposed construction of a new operation center for the New Kent County Department of Public Utilities located at 751 Poindexter Road, of which approximately two-thirds is located within the aforementioned overlay district. Proposed improvements associated with the new operation center development includes the construction of a new operation center building, a new warehouse building, a new curb cut to provide additional southernly point of site access, the partial replacement and relocation of existing chain link fencing, and installation of two new slidable security gates for each point of site entrance, which would also be made of chain link fencing material. The site, it's worth noting that the site itself can only be viewed from North Courthouse, which is the right of way from which the overlay district boundaries do extend when traveling in the northbound lane along North Courthouse. To talk a little bit about staff's analysis of this exception request, staff did find that the proposed partial relocation and replacement of existing chain link fencing, again, the existing operation center does feature chain link fencing along its entire frontage along Poindexter there. And the partial relocation and replacement of said fencing and the use of chain link security gates at the site would successfully strike the delicate balance between meeting all of the exception criteria, rather, that is articulated in Section 98 dash 1071, which is, relates to the criteria that needs to be met in order for an exception request to be granted, as well as meeting the applicant's need to provide adequate security measures for that operation center. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the aforementioned exception request, but I am available for any specific questions you might have about this. And there's a little bit of a site location image for context.
Thank you, Ms. Silva. Any questions or comments, Mr. Silva? Just a general comment on my part. I do think it's important for the county to generally subscribe to the same rules that we apply to the citizens and businesses. But we also have a valid interest in protecting public property. And I know from, don't really show it on here, well, at least not very easily, this overlay district overlay just pretty much covers, I think, about 200 feet along the, follows pretty much parallel of that property line, creating that closer to the courthouse, North Courthouse Road. So it's not the entire property that's under this overlay district. It's just that approximately 200 feet. The existing chain link fence, was that present at the time the, when we established the overlay district?
That's correct. When the overlay district regulations were initially adopted, I believe, July of 2015, and then amended in 2022, the chain link fencing was in place.
It was already in place.
That's correct.
And also, as far as a comment, would it be to owners to provide any type of screening for that 200 feet that's actually in the overlay district in front of that fence? Or was it kind of a driveway that's, or not, or a driving area in front of that fence now or intended?
So if you're actually able to go to the next graphic in here, this will show the proposed conditions associated with the new operation center development. I think it should be page two. There we go. Oh, maybe one back. Sorry, it's a bit hard to see. There would be some parking located forward of the chain link fencing. But again, you know, when the operation center will come forward to us for its site plan approval, the landscaping requirements that are typical of a site plan development would still apply here. So any sort of transitional buffers or landscaping that would be required would be addressed at the site plan stage. But of course, if the commission were to feel that additional landscaping were warranted, that's something that would be within their purview as well.
Again, if any area that were to provide screening, I think it would be from that proposed driveway. I'm assuming it's orienting south.
Yes, sir.
Which would fall into that overlay district. So that'd be my only question or concern.
Mr. Chairman, I would support such notion, especially when that landscaping, if judiciously placed, counts to still kind of screen the fencing, yet maybe somewhat reduce the building height by giving some difference of visual appeal instead of just to start building right behind the chain link fence. So I would support that effort of adding judiciously placed landscaping along the chain link fence wherever it may occur. And it also kind of supports the corridor ideology.
Mr. Silva, the parking lot that's right there on Poindexter Road, I know that at one point in time, that was sort of like a park and ride. Is that still available to the public?
Yes, so that would not be behind the relocated chain link fencing. That would still be readily accessible to the public. They wouldn't need to pass through the security gate in order to access that parking area, nor the main visitor parking for the new operation center. The chain link fencing that runs parallel to Poindexter, at the point that it meets the most northernly point of site access, would turn 90 degrees and rotate into the site. And approximately 50 feet or so inwards towards the site is then where the new security gate would be.
Thank you. That's been a rather important spot in New Kent because there was no other place for a lot of, I know people work at the shipyard, would use that to park there. I'd like to see that continue.
Understood.
Any other questions or discussion? And again, Ms. Silva, you wouldn't anticipate any issues with any additional screening, should we ask that?
I don't think so, no. No.
Thank you. Being there's no other discussion, I will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. In order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution number PC 0325 to forward the exception request by the New Kent County Department of Public Utilities to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
And Mr. DeBroski, is that including additional screening?
Including additional screening, which we have discussed in this meeting.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. DeBroski. We have a motion to approve the exception request including additional screening in the overlay district area. Mr. Rutter, could you please poll commissioners?
Mr. Moyer?
Abstain.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Thank you. So motion carries. Under new business, we have a second item. It's another exception request, PC 04 dash 25. Mr. Silva?
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. For the final time, my name is Patrick Silver, Principal Planner at the Department of Community Development's Planning Division here this evening to provide an overview of an exception request submitted by Emily Stafford on behalf of the Adams and Gammon families, requesting exception from Section 91 dash 126, a six of the subdivision ordinance, to waive provisions requiring the construction of a new permanent 50-foot deeded right of way constructed to public road standards for proposed family subdivision of tax maps 3-10 and 3-10E located on Old Church Road, both of which are zoned A1 agricultural. So a little bit of background on this specific exception provision. In December 2016, the New Kent Board of Supervisors adopted ordinance O-16-16, which allows for exceptions to the aforementioned roadway standards articulated within the family subdivision requirements. So the intent of this provision is to allow for exception requests for the public road construction requirements due to the unnecessary burdens promulgated to applicants based on the context of a given request. So to speak more directly to the exception before you this evening, while the proposed configuration of lots associated with the aforementioned family subdivision is still being finalized, staff, this is about the most complicated family subdivision proposal I've seen in my time here. And we have been working very closely with the applicant and their engineer on this process. But again, it is still being finalized. With that being the case, the Adams and Gammon families have conveyed their desire to execute a family subdivision in the near-term future to create eight new lots for their immediate family members. So all new lots are proposed to be accessed via new driveways accessing said lots directly from both Steel Trap Road and Old Church Road respectively. And all of these driveways would be designed to allow for the safe passage of emergency vehicles and a statement to this effect would be required on the final plat filing associated with the future family subdivision. And as detailed in the memo for this specific docket item, the waiver request before you this evening specifically includes exception requests to the road width requirement, the surface treatment requirement, and the 50-foot deeded right of way requirements that are usually mandatory of a family subdivision request, which creates three or more new lots. To speak a little bit to staff's consideration of this specific exception request, again, we have been working very closely with the applicant on their proposal for the last few months and feel comfortable with recommending approval of the request. Furthermore, according to the 2023 VDOT traffic counts, unfortunately, the 2024 ones won't be released until this coming September. But Steel Trap Road and Old Church Road are both low-traffic volume roads. And staff finds that the roads do have the sufficient capacity to accommodate the eight new lots proposed as part of the family subdivision request. With that in mind, staff's opinion is that the proposed driveways accessing the lots from Steel Trap and Old Church Roads would not adversely affect safety conditions in the vicinity of the proposed subdivision, which is a key consideration of the exception request criteria. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the exception request, but I'm available for any specific questions you might have relating to the request.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Good.
Is any of this property into an AFD? Or is it the adjacent property to it?
I do not believe this. Well, I can double check here while we are live. Thank goodness for laptops. But this property is not located in AFD.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Silva.
Mr. Silva, when I went on geographic informations, there's actually three parcels, correct? One is, I would say, conjoined bifurcated by the roadway. The other one is separable, separate from the roadway to the southwest. Okay? Do you have any understanding of how many lots may occur on the 200 acres versus how many lots may occur on the, I think it's about 60 acres?
Yes. So again, the final parameters of the subdivision are still being finalized. I think they are between five and six for the main lot that you're seeing here on this image.
And that would remind, mean two on the other side?
That's correct. So the idea being that as part of the future family subdivision, the non-contiguous parcels would be separated into their own, own distinct lots.
And then the, is the one acre parcel that's identified, but are the nearly equilateral square there part of the subdivision per se? Is it enlarging, decreasing in size? It's about a weight, one acre in size, I believe.
So you're referring to the one that is in the very
Dead center, yes.
The dead center. So that is already a separate and distinct lot, separately addressed as 12590 Steel Trap Road, and that is actually Ms. Stafford's.
But that's under the same family.
That's under the same family, and that's actually the home of the individual who's making this exception request.
Is there any creation of fee simple access to that lot with the subdivision?
Yeah, I believe fee simple access does already exist to provide access to that lot from Steel Trap.
Okay. I'm not used to subdivision of land in which there's not fee simple access to publicly owned rice way.
Again, this is a unique one based on the uniqueness of this parcel.
Things happen in the past.
Yeah.
Ms. Silva, so how long will the family members be committed to owning those parcels as part of a normal family subdivision? Is there a certain time limit they have to?
So there is a holding period that is typically required for ownership or for, rather, to owners who are granted ownership of new lots that are created as part of a family subdivision. I believe the subdividers' request and the heirs who would be granted the new lots, their intention is to request their intention is to request an exception to that holding period, but that's an administrative process, that's handled internally. The subdivision agent has the authority to grant an exception to that holding period based on their judgment of the context and reasons for which the subdivision are being required, or being requested, rather. And again, this is, this family has owned this property for many decades, they're longtime New Kent residents, and their intent is to see their, their family all live in close proximity to each other. So staff personally doesn't have any concerns about there being an intent to subdivide and sell lots or anything like that for personal gain.
And do I, am I understanding this correctly, too? Will each parcel abut to a public right-of-way?
That's correct, yep.
Okay.
With the exception of the one that you see in the middle there.
Mr. Silva, I believe I read that it's normally a case two years' holding after reallocation into the family member.
That's correct.
Hold it for two years before they can resell it to outside, okay.
I have one other question, too. Once we go into this, this will be listed as a subdivision? So will the status of the property change to residential?
In terms of the use of the property?
The whole entire, is the whole entire 200-some acres going to be divvied?
Yes, there will be still active agricultural activities on several of the parcels that would be?
So they'll be five acres or greater, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so then even though technically on our deed books, it's going to say a subdivision, it will still be listed as agriculture, A1?
Yes, as far as, yeah, absolutely, as far as the zoning classification, yeah.
So question for that, once a house is built on the lot, then that house is now, and that land, that is, that lot will go into the tax books as residence?
That's correct.
And will come off the tax books as agriculture?
For the portions that would be developed with residences, absolutely, yep.
Right, right. Okay, so we, we make the assumption now that it stays agriculture, when building starts, then it changes over to residential?
That's my understanding, yes.
But that's not changed in the zoning?
No.
It's always a, it's gonna stay A1, right?
No, right, yeah. In terms?
It's just a residence on agricultural piece of property. It's not part of an AFD program, so you're not pulling out an acre around the house and leaving the rest in the tax abatement program or anything like that. It's still going to be an agricultural zone and tax property.
Okay, so if I have 10 acres that's in agriculture, on my assessment, and I put a quarter of a million-dollar house on that 10 acres, if it was zoned agricultural one, that land value stays the same, and all that difference is improvement?
It should be.
Okay, the only thing with, it would be the same as if it was agriculture, because it's an A1, but the improvement is what would change the taxes.
That's correct.
With the exception of that one acre where the high site is, that would change probably, but.
Correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Silva? And if there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Yes, sir.
In order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt Resolution Number PC 0425 to forward the exception request by Emily Stafford on behalf of the Adams and Gammon families to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Reverend Hathaway. So I have a motion to approve the exception request with a favorable recommendation to the board. Mr. Rutter, can you poll the commissioners, please?
Mr. Moore.
Abstain.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. DeBroski.
Aye.
Ms. Townsend.
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Silva. And next on the agenda, chairman's report. I will defer to any parting words from the previous chair.
I have none. I said all right.
Well, again, thanks to Chairman Bennett for his service last year, as well as the other, other officers of the Planning Commission, and thanks to the Planning Commission for their work last year, as well as staff. And we'll move on to Plan RBA report. Reverend Hathaway?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I want again to encourage the commission members to, if you have not gone to Plan RBA and signed up for the newsletter, do that. It's called the Better Together Connector. There's a lot of great information there. The Public Outreach and Engagement Committee met on January the 9th. We reviewed the Pathways to Future Plan, which is the FY 25 to 30 Regional Strategic Plan. And what's significant about that is that Plan RBA staff met with the staff of the nine jurisdictions, looked at their economic and strategic plan, and they've come up with one for the region. The Plan RBA, Plan RBA will host a Pathways to the Future Regional Symposium on Friday, March 14th. And what, the idea there is that they will highlight the different elements of the plan and how they benefit the nine jurisdictions. The RRTPO's Community Transportation Advisory Committee met on Thursday, January the 16th. Holly Gordon introduced the Long Range Transportation Toolkit. That is an exciting toolkit, you'll see that if you go to their Facebook page. The last thing I have is that the Partnership for Housing and Affordability State Housing in the Richland Region event is scheduled for Thursday at 4:00 PM. If you have not registered, it's too late, but it's a lot of good information on housing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Reverend Hathaway. All right, next, commissioner reports. Ms. Thomas?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Johnson?
Nothing.
Thank you.
Mr. DeBroski?
Nothing at this time.
Yeah. Ms. Townsend?
Still waiting, bated breath on Route 249 in Dispatch, hoping that something's going to be happening soon. It still is a very difficult area to deal with, and I hope somebody will consider that when they take a look at it.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. And so noted.
Oh.
Okay. Reverend Hathaway?
Nothing.
Dr. Schmidt?
Nothing.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sir, and it's more of information to the other commissioners, and in the discussion I've had with staff, I've, I've kind of pushed the idea that sometimes it is necessary for us as commissioners to look at things more pictorially than on written word. Some of the land uses we see is, the description of what is intended to be, the land is supposed to be used for, is described in words, and the vision of that is always not very evident. So I'm encouraging staff, and perhaps that when we start adjusting our zoning ordinances and our, and our regulations, that sometimes the items that come before us, we do see conceptual plan, that's, gives us an idea of the intensity of the land use and how it interfaces with adjacent land uses, instead of just relying on words. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Rose?
Nothing at this time.
All right, Mr. Moore?
I'll take her Patty, Ms. Townsend's situation. Tomorrow at 2:00, I have a Zoom call with VDOT Transportation Director Amy Inman and myself to talk about the next step for the roundabout, because it is, it is at design for Timmins, so we'll be, we'll be talking about that. It's more than likely going to be a, maybe a 50-50 payment, VDOT paying half and us paying half, but that looks like the best, the, the easements is what needs to be looked at for that. If you know that the corner of Dispatch and New Kent Highway is a sewer main, so there are some decisions that have to be made at that, at that one, because that's where, I think, where it terminates, too. So I will get to report back to you specifically and to the rest of the board. Also, I did this last year, the first meeting, my abstentions that I make are not any, are not making a comment on anything, is I have to abstain because I'm a board supervisor, and I get, I will get to vote on this, whatever I have abstained on, at the board of supervisors. So I can't vote for something during this, except for, you know, officers and things like that, okay?
You don't want to double dip.
Administrative in nature.
Yeah, I can't double dip. I don't, I, that, that's it, okay.
All right. Two items, first, for my fellow commissioners, Ms. Townsend, Ms. Johnson, Reverend Hathaway, and Mr. LaRochelle, who's not here, and myself, we're all reappointed for four more years. I do appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve, and certainly we appreciate your commitment as well.
Thank you.
And for my monthly update on the Comprehensive Plan Update Committee, notes from Todd Gordon with EPR, they've been working with VDOT and DEQ on their required review of their, of the draft document. He feels that we have incorporated, they've incorporated the VDOT comments into the document, and they're still working to satisfy DEQ comments. Honestly, I don't know what, what the DEQ comments are from Todd's email, but the goal is, is to make the DEQ revisions this week, and along some other odds and ends, and once they get the revised draft, they're going, they will send it out to the steering committee for review, and then work with staff to schedule a planning commission and board supervisors review. So the end is near, hopefully, coming near.
Will that be a work, a work session during, during the day, or will that be a joint evening meeting?
For the review, you know, maybe a work session is probably the best order of business. Maybe a joint work session might work out to save, you know, so it won't be a duplication of our efforts, plus it will reduce the timeframes involved, so I think that's something that we should, should consider, so. All right, and that's all I have, other than, hopefully I'll operate more smoothly next time, this is new to the job here, so, but again, appreciate the appointment. Next is our staff reports, and more specifically, the 2024 annual report. Mr. Silva?
Back again, yes. You'll find within your all's meeting packet for tonight, the 2024 Annual Report of the Planning Commission, which does provide an overview of the various items considered by the Planning Commission over the past calendar year. So this includes the various land use and public hearing considerations that the Planning Commission made, a final 2024 population estimate, a record of attendance for the members of the commission, as well as a volume of the requests that were processed by both the Planning Division and considered by the Planning Commission, and a comparison of this volume to previous years. So as you'll see in the report, we've been all, all been quite busy this last year, you know, when we compare 2024 to 2023, we considered more subdivisions, site plans, cultural event permits, and conditional use permits when compared to the previous year. But in any case, that's, that's sort of a brief overview of the annual report, and I'm available for any questions anyone might have about it. And if there are none, if it pleases the members of the Planning Commission, staff would welcome a motion to approve the 2024 annual report and forward it to the board of supervisors for their consideration.
Any further questions, Mr. Silva, regarding the 2024 report? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the report as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Mr. Rutter, could you poll the commissioners, please?
Mr. Moore.
Abstain.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. DeBroski.
Aye.
Ms. Townsend.
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
I find the report acceptable.
Glad to hear it.
Aye. Mr. Davis.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Silva. Any other staff reports other than the, Mr. Rutter?
I believe so, no.
All right, thank you. And now, meeting schedule, the next meeting will be Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in this boardroom. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Seven?
Thank you, Ms. Townsend, and we conclude the meeting.